Offered a live streaming feature. The meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting will provided as part of the posted agenda. Mr. Taylor, if you could summarize any public comment received prior to tonight?
There was no public comment received, Mr. President.
Great, thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this time, please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection out of the service, men and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded. The official minute book of the township.
I'll make that motion.
The motion is our second. Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. Commissioner Morris is away on vacation this week, so we have six of our seven commissioners with us. And let's see. I would like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session just prior to tonight's meeting to discuss two matters of litigation. And at this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Police, Michael Picko, and Springfield Township Magisterial District Justice Kate McGill, and invite them to the front of the room to administer ear of office to our newest police officer, Eunice Bajida.
Hi, thank you. I just a few words real quick. Delighted to welcome family, delighted to introduce our newest police officer, Eunice Bajida. That's going to bring us back up to our full manpower after the retirement of Sergeant Bruce Nesbit back in February. So as most of the officers in this room know, the recruitment in our noble profession has been very bleak over the last few years, about four years, with the numbers taking the police exam much lower than they used to be. In fact, we're already working on our next test. That's tentatively scheduled for Saturday, September the 7th, right here at Springfield High School once again. So the officers in the room know this. The hiring of a police officer, and you might notice from your son, is a rather time-consuming process where you have to get the Civil Service Commission to approve it, authorize examination, the candidates take a written exam, physical fitness assessment, interview by our supervisory staff, and a very thorough background investigation by our detective division, including a pie graph examination. Then the top three candidates are invited to an interview with the Board of Commissioners, and then make a conditional offer to one of the candidates pending physical and psychological examinations. So while it's very time-consuming, this is the way it should be because we want the most qualified personnel working, representing Springfield Township in the police department. So a little background for Officer Bajida, family knows this, but graduated the Ridley High School 2019, attended Delaware County Technical School and Universal Technical Institute also in 2019. He's a graduate of the Delaware County Community College Municipal Police Academy, the Act 120 certification program that's required to be a police officer. That was in 2021. And I was looking over the records in our department. He's actually the fifth officer in Springfield Township that has graduated the Delaware County Municipal Police Academy, the others being Montgomery County and Temple University. Officer Bajida was a part-time officer in the Norwood Borough Police Department since February of 2022. And just to add a little more spice, he figured he'll be a part-time officer as well at the Falkroft Borough Police Department since February of 2023. Most of the folks in the room know that Delaware County is comprised of many small boroughs in their police departments. In fact, both of these boroughs have a population of about 6,000 people. Norwood is less than a square mile, and Falkroft has them beat a little bit. They're like 1.5 square miles. So we welcome Officer Eunice, Officer Eunice Bajida to our police department and look forward to having you a long, safe, and rewarding career with us.
Oh, God.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good morning.
All right, ready?
Yes.
I, Eunice Bajida.
I, Eunice Bajida.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the law of the United States.
And the law of the United States.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the township of Springfield.
And the township of Springfield.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As an officer.
As an officer.
For Springfield Township.
For Springfield Township.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey and enforce.
Obey and enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Religious creed. Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability. I will obey the rules.
I will obey the rules.
And regulations.
And regulations.
Policies.
Policies.
And procedures. Governing sworn members.
Governing sworn members.
Of Springfield Township Police Department.
Of the Springfield Township Police Department.
I will not knowingly accept.
I will not knowingly accept.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money.
Any money.
Or other valuable things.
Or other valuable things.
For performance.
For performance.
Or non-performance.
Or non-performance.
Any act.
Of any act.
Or duty.
Or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than such compensation.
Other than such compensation.
As may be allowed.
As may be allowed.
By the Board of Commissioners.
By the Board of Commissioners.
Of Springfield Township.
Of Springfield Township. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Good start.
Thank you, Chief, and Justice McGill. I do also just want to recognize Lieutenant Mersky is here with us tonight, and I counted, or we counted, 10 of our police officers and our police specialists are here. So we know that you guys and girls show up to support each other, and that's very much appreciated. So welcome, Eunice. Come to a great place.
Thank you.
We'll have somebody, family member pin the badge if you want, if we're okay with that.
Absolutely. Yeah, let's do a picture. Yeah. Eunice, can we do a, can we do a picture with you?
Yes.
The Commissioners?
It'd be great.
Yeah, it's good.
Dress down.
Had I known.
Yeah, me too.
Who's your guy? Select a team partner.
Motherly and his family, maturity and love phrase can really express.
I'm asking him over.
All right.
Oh, wait, you can have her stay in there. Yeah, she's got it.
My brother.
My better side.
Have a bad side.
All right.
We're up.
You started with the first question.
But that is.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, come back.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Great, exactly. But this is like the No One But You.
Well, it's.
So many kids doing this. I'm going to pay up for them. No pay up.
I don't know. Craig, are we live? Okay. Okay. See you, Chief. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you too. Summer, hot summer, guys. Yeah. No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Still want to stay for the recycling report? Okay. Okay. Do we have any Zoomers? Two? All right, hello Zoomers. Thanks for sticking with us. We are still live, so. All right, ready to resume? Okay, as part of tonight's business meeting, the Board of Commissioners will conduct a public hearing on a proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 4, which covers amusement devices, and Chapter 114 zoning of the Code of Township of Springfield. The purpose of the proposed ordinance is to regulate the placement of amusement devices in the township. Any questions or comments related to proposed ordinance should be held until the public hearing is conducted. So at this time, except for that particular item, the board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on agenda item now at the appropriate time. Cricket, cricket. Okay, public comment at this point is closed, and we'll now go to our committee reports. And I will start with Resolution Number 1644 regarding the Emergency Operations Plan. Every two years, the Montgomery County Public Safety reminds municipalities to review and update their local emergency management plans. While the framework of the plan rarely needs amendment, the resources and contact portions of the plan do require review and updating. Recently, the Springfield Township Emergency Operations Plan was updated by the township's emergency management staff and was reviewed and approved by Montgomery County. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1644, the Resolution Adopting the January 2024 Springfield Township Emergency Operations Plan. So that is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. My next item. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of a mutual aid agreement for emergency services among 25 local municipalities and 21 non-municipal partners, including five educational and healthcare institutions and two utility providers. The intent of the agreement is to coordinate and formalize an arrangement by which trained personnel, equipment, and other resources may be assembled to address an emergency incident that an individual municipality could not respond to on its own. So that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Have we reached out to the school already on whether they're interested?
Not yet.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. Okay, now the moment we've all been waiting for, our public hearing for the amusement devices. So first, I will accept a motion to suspend the July 10th, 2024 business meeting of the Board of Commissioners in order to conduct a public hearing on a proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 4 and Chapter 114 of the Code of Spring Township of Springfield.
Make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Okay. And we don't need to discuss or comment a suspension either, do we?
You really don't.
Great. All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. And now I'll accept a motion to convene a public hearing on the proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 4 and Chapter 114 of the Code of the Township of Springfield.
I'll make the motion. I'll second that motion.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. Okay. Oh, boy. First, I will read some words. Those first words are about the purpose of the hearing, the public hearing. Deep breaths. This public hearing is being held in compliance with Section 609 of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code to consider zoning code text amendments to amend the definition of amusement device and to further amend the zoning code to add amusement devices as a permitted use in the shopping center district and as a permitted use when authorized as a special exception in the B2 business district. The legal requirements associated with the public hearing have been met by publishing a notice of the public hearing in the June 23rd and 30th, 2024 issues of the Ambler Gazette. In addition, public hearing notices were posted in the Township Building and Library and on the Township website. Copies of the full text ordinance were available in the Township Building, the library, the offices of Montgomery Publishing, and the Montgomery County Law Library. In summary, the proposed ordinance amends the Code of the Township of Springfield, Chapter 4 covering amusement devices and Section 2, to amend the definition of amusement devices in Chapter 114 zoning, Article 2 definitions, Section 114-21 definitions and terms, to add the term and definition of amusement device to further amend Article 11 for S Shopping Center District, Section 114-113 use regulations, to add amusement device as a permitted use subject to Chapter 4 amusement device and additional requirements to further amend Article 10 B2 Business District, Section 114-101 permitted uses, and to add amusement device as a permitted use when authorized as a special exception and subject to additional requirements. Regarding the Planning Commission review, in a letter dated June 5th, 2024, Springfield Township Planning Commission discussed the proposed ordinance at its meeting of June 4th, 2024, and voted unanimously to recommend enactment of the ordinance with five recommendations that were subsequently incorporated in. Now regarding the Montgomery County Planning Commission, under cover letter of May 31st, 2024, the Montgomery County Planning Commission provided a review of the ordinance. The county recommended enactment of the ordinance with three recommendations that were consistent with the local planning commission review and were incorporated into the current ordinance under consideration. The Board of Commissioners is holding a public hearing on the zoning code text amendments and may call for a vote. So first, we will take any questions from the board.
Quick question. And we cannot outright ban these devices, these electronic games.
There's a Pennsylvania Supreme Court case directly on point.
So the question that we're sort of, we're pointing this whole thing is they have to be allowed in the community somewhere.
So you get to zone.
And it's correct, if we enact the zoning that is too restrictive, we could be at risk of liability for not allowing that.
Correct, and this ordinance not only permits the use in that certain business zoning district, but it also requires a setback of the use from various public locations like parks.
Schools.
Churches, et cetera.
Any other questions from the board? Are there any questions from those in the audience?
And I heard what you, Jane Thomas-Orland, I heard what you just said, which kind of negates, however. I think it's a slippery slope. And I think of New Jersey that allows alcohol and drinking, but there are a couple of dry towns. So I don't know why the Supreme Court would say that we can't not allow these to be. Because I just think it's bad for the kids and et cetera. But that's just my opinion.
I will only say that there is a lot of interest in this as a result of that case in Harrisburg, and there is a lot of legislation being considered at the moment to better regulate these things. Because the Supreme Court case said they're not gambling devices because there's skill involved. In any event, I'm sure we've not heard the last of this particular issue.
I hope they go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, lead your way.
Okay. We'll move on to, is there any testimony from the board?
And are there currently any of these devices in the township? Don't know.
We believe that there are in two convenient stores in town.
But they don't need to be registered, like we don't need to, we're not notified when they arrive?
No, we, it's basically, we rely on resident enforcement by bringing it to our attention, and then we would go out and we would require a registration. Now, we've always had Article 4 amusement devices, which these types of devices would fall under. However, the zoning code didn't match up with Article 4, or Chapter 4 of the code. So what you're doing tonight is you're amending your zoning code so that the two chapters are in agreement, so that we can enforce the provisions of Chapter 4.
Any other testimony from the board? Any other testimony from those in the audience?
Yeah, I would just add that I vote to approve this begrudgingly because, you know, it's something that clearly we need to allow, but it's not something, this isn't business that excites, probably, I don't, I don't want to speak for everybody, but doesn't excite anybody in the board, but.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement with that. That nobody, we're not taking action to allow gambling devices. We're, we're just trying to follow law and have a no-fortunate mechanism.
Right, and if I can say, if you don't permit them anywhere, you open yourself to the potential for a curative amendment, which means someone will put it where they think it's good.
Or some kind of site-specific relief.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
That's like some.
The billboards all over again.
Right, and for that same reason, originally, we had discussed the 1,000 feet from a lot of those places, but it became too restrictive where it wouldn't have allowed anywhere. So 500 is what made legal sense. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, that it, there are locations where the use will definitely be permitted at 500. At 1,000, there was some question as to whether the setbacks would overlap and in effect resulted in what's called a de facto exclusion, which is, it appears to permit it, but in actuality it doesn't.
Correct.
So that's why we went 1,000, but.
We can't say, you can't be within 20,000 feet of a school.
Right.
Six miles.
Six miles. There you go, okay. Great, well, thank you for everyone who provided questions and testimony. At this time, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing related to ordinance amending Chapter 4. related to ordinance amending Chapters Four and Chapter one fourteen to regulate the placement of amusement devices and to reconvene the business meeting.
Amen.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. Now that motion also said to reconvene.
Right.
So we don't need another reconvening motion.
Right.
Correct? Okay, we have been reconvened then. And that, uh, concludes my report. So we will now go to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one ordinance I'd like to bring to the attention of the board. It's ordinance number seven, uh, nine seventy-eight amusement devices. I move that the Board of Commissioners enact ordinance number nine seventy-eight and ordinance amending the Code of Springfield, of Township of Springfield, Chapter Four, parentheses, amusement devices, and the parentheses, and Chapter one fourteen, parentheses, zoning, and the parentheses, to amend the definition of amusement devices, to add the term amusement devices, and to add amusement devices as a permitted use in the shopping center zoning district and as permitted use with authorization by special exception in the B-two Business zoning district. That is my motion.
The motion, is there a second? Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We will now go to the Chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first night regarding the bill listing, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the June check reconciliation in the amount of one million, one hundred thousand, five hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-four cents, and the July bill listing in the amount of nine hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. And that's my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
And next I want to announce that the, uh, zoning hearing board for the month of July will be meeting on Monday, July twenty-second at seven P M. in the Township Building, where they were here, where they will hear the following two applications. Uh, the first, the application of Mr. Keith Mattis, owner of the property located at two seventeen Preston Road in Flower Town. The applicant is requesting a variance seeking, uh, to construct in addition to the side of the home that proposes to reduce the side yard from the required twenty feet in width to eighteen feet. That property is zoned within the A Residential District of Ward One. The second application of is from Holy Martyrs Church. Owners of the property, uh, are requesting an interpretation and confirmation that a special exception for an expansion of a non-conforming use is required for the placement of a temporary modular classroom to be installed on a vacant lot. The proposed modular classroom, classroom will be used by Caring Branches Early Care Preschool. The proposed modular classroom will setback eighty-five feet from Clement, Clement Street, Clement Road, and take access from the existing rectory parking lot. Property is one of nine adjoining parcels owned by Holy Martyrs Church. That property is zoned within the B-one Business District of Ward Three. Copies of these application packets are available for, for review in the Community Development Office during normal business hours at the Township Building. Uh, and again, that zoning hearing board meeting will be on Monday, July twenty-second at seven P M. in this Township Building. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We will now go to the Chairwoman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Ratsevam.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a motion before you today. I move that the Board of Commissioners waive the requirement that seventy-five percent of participants in a league utilizing township facilities must be township residents in order that the Next Play Summer Basketball League may utilize the basketball courts at McKelvey Park. The waiver is granted for the use of the facility in accordance with the permit request form dated July one, twenty twenty-four, for the dates beginning July eleventh, uh, through August fifteenth of this year. Use of the facilities is limited to four thirty to nine P M. on specified weekday evenings throughout the next month. The Next Play Basketball League has operated successfully under similar conditions, uh, annually since twenty twenty-one. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Bigger. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Quick, quick comment, just to reiterate that, uh, even with the, this um, exception, it's not restrictive to any Springfield residents, that Springfield, all Springfield residents that even, uh, apply tonight could still participate in the, the activity, uh, and even can participate at a reduced rate for being residents.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
And that's all I have. I just wanted to comment, uh, that we look forward to a hearing about a future opening celebration of the in-progress Cisco Park, which looks like it's going really well. I'm looking forward to hearing about when we can celebrate that opening in the future. I mean, it sounds like it could be as, as far as available to the public as soon as end of this month, potentially. Uh, but as far as an opening at a later date to be announced. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Ratsevam. We will now go to the Chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner May.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to begin with the, uh, recycling report, and during the month of June, two thousand twenty-four, Springfield Township residents recycled one hundred forty-eight point nine tons of materials with a household participation rate of sixty-eight point seven percent. The net cost for the month was seventeen thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Board would also like to remind residents that electronic waste is not suitable for collection by the township. In two thousand and ten, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania passed the Covered Device Recycling Act prohibiting the disposal of electronic waste in landfills and waste to steam plants. Electronic waste includes computers, televisions, monitors, keyboards, printers, and similar devices. Small household electrics and kitchen appliances are also unable to be collected. Please reference the township website for appropriate disposal facilities for these and other household items. Uh, the next thing I'd like to cover is the structural roof analysis. And this is a, a motion to the board. I move that the Board of Commissioners engage the Services of Architecture and Engineering Innovations Lancaster, Pennsylvania to conduct a structural analysis of the police administration and public works buildings to determine the suitability of each structure for the attachment of roof-mounted solar panels. The cost of the work shall not exceed two thousand, three hundred eighty dollars. That is my motion.
The other motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Right. Then moving on to the Environmental Advisory Commission. I have another motion. I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Alex Waldman to an unexpired term of service as a regular member of the Environmental Advisory Commission. Ms. Waldman's term of service shall expire June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-seven. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote, Mr. Taylor.
Great. And on that, I'd just like to add, uh, you know, Ms. Waldman was just for our board recently where she, uh, you know, shared with us, uh, her wealth experience in this, and so, you know, she'll just be a a great member of the, the group and, uh, is already adding tremendous value.
Excellent.
Uh, then my last, uh, item was relevant to the community choice aggregation. And this was for us to consider authorizing a letter of support to the P A Public Utility Commission on behalf of Seven Burrows requesting a declaratory, declaratory order to implement community choice aggregation. I got a little, little twisted there. Um, given the complexity that, that surrounds this, uh, I'm, you know, I'm recommending that the board table this matter and refer to the Environmental Advisory Commission for review where, you know, the, the individuals there would have the expertise to, uh, to give us a good opinion. And that's just a recommendation. I don't, I don't know that that's a motion. Is it a motion?
It's not a motion. It's just, uh, um, fill in the gaps because it was an agenda item that you guys described to not act upon.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner May, for all of your declaratory statements. We'll now go to the Chairwoman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner McNamara.
Thank you. Today I have six items. I win. Uh, the first is regarding seventeen twenty-five Waldman Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of the Additional Service Agreement, number twelve, BL Companies Incorporated, to perform groundwater sampling at the Falling Tank Card Corporation of American Property located at seven twenty-five Waldman Avenue in Orland. The purpose of the sampling activities is to document the presence and migration patterns, if any, volatile organic compounds in the vicinity of three existing groundwater monitoring wells, six, nine, and eleven on the west side of the property near Orlandville Road. The total cost of the work will not exceed fifty-eight hundred dollars. That is my motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just a quick comment to reiterate what was said on Monday, that this is, uh, mandated testing, uh, mandated from D E P. And thus far, this will still be the fourth round of testing.
That's correct. Fourth, fourth consecutive round of testing.
And thus far, um, there's been no migration and actually a reduction, a, a consecutive reduction in, in, uh, anything that was tested for, so. Hopefully this should, this should close it.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
The second is regarding the sale of used equipment. Section fifteen oh one point two of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code sets forth regulations for the sale of township personal property via electronic auction. The Springfield Township Lead Supervisor has requested permission to sell the following used equipment via the municipal online public auction site. Two thousand bandit wood chipper attachment, DeWalt sixteen-foot radial arm saw, and miscellaneous used equipment valued less than one thousand dollars. I move, make a motion.
That sounds like a great motion. We have a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
The A C isn't getting to the sun. Um, the next item is, uh, regarding the two thousand twenty-three wheel loader. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of a new John Deere Model five forty-four G rubber tire wheel loader from Groff Tractor and Equipment pursuant to the Pennsylvania Co-Stars contract quote number four four zero 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 two eight one zero seven. The cost of the new equipment is two hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars less the trade of a nineteen ninety-eight Caterpillar Model I T two H G rubber tire wheel loader and American Kubler system four cubic yard bucket collectively valued at twenty-two thousand, five hundred for a net cost of one hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. That is my motion.
Motion has been made. Do we have a second? Second. Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
The next item is regarding Shade Tree Commission. I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Jennifer Ponce, Lee Kowalski, and Matt Johnson to new three-year terms of service as members of the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission. Mrs. Ponce serves as a regular voting member, while Mr. Kowalski and Johnson serve alternate members. The new three-year terms of service shall expire on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-seven. That is my motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Next, regarding the Black Horse Inn, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the Township Manager to enter into an agreement between Springfield Township and Michael and Jennifer Kathy at ten sixty-eight Daniel Drive and Dress, Dresser to lease Suite F, second floor, we are at Black Horse Inn. The base rent is nine hundred dollars per month plus utilities. That is my motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. Looking pretty good.
The last item is regarding Carson Valley Children's Aid. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of a declaration of easement concerning stormwater facilities between P N C Bank and A Jeffrey Idler, trustees of that certain trust under the will of Robert N. Carson, deceased, and their successors in trust, and Springfield Township for two stormwater management detention basins, berms, surface swales, and related facilities located within a three point four seven acre easement area as depicted on a plan prepared by Boucher and James Incorporated entitled Basin Easement Exhibit dated October sixteenth, twenty fifteen. The declaration memorializes a grant of easement in favor of Springfield Township along with construction and maintenance responsibilities, restrictions, and indemnification provisions. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just a comment that the Board of Commissioners would like to thank Carson Trust for allowing the township to utilize this land to construct the stormwater detention facilities.
Great. Right. Any others? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. Shut up.
That concludes my very long report.
Thank you, Commissioner McNamara. Uh, I will stand in for Commissioner Morris. He is our Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, and Commissioner Morris does not have any, um, items on his report this evening. Uh, so at this time, um, the we are now open to public comment. And, um, we don't have anyone in the room except us and a couple zoomers. Thank you. Um, but therefore, we can move on from public comment. So I will, um, accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Do we have a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record unanimous vote. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.